Good evening, everybody. It's 6:02 PM on May 13th, 2025, and I'm going to call the regular May meeting of the Groton Board of Education Policy Committee to order. Present are members Andrea Ackerman, Ian Thomas, Superintendent Austin, our great wizard of numbers and statistics Lauren Cassini, IT guru Clint Kennedy, and myself, Matt Shulman. Our first order of business is review of the minutes of the meeting of April 8th. Ian and Andrea, have you had a chance to look at the minutes? Have you any questions, changes?
No, I have not. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I've reviewed them and I have no additions, no deckings.
Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Thomas, second, since Andrea hadn't had a chance to read them, I'll second it. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye, that's affirmative, aye.
Do you want to abstain, Andrea?
Yes.
Okay, so it is two, two affirmative, none opposed, one abstain, and that was Dr. Ackerman. Okay, before we start our old business. Oh, I've got the old, that's last week's, before we start the business, I'd like to share. I promised the meeting will not go over two hours. If it looks like we're going over an hour, somewhere we get to a break about that time, I'm going to give a five-minute recess so people can get a glass of water or whatever fruit juice they want. We're going to start now with the. Why I've got the April 8th all of that. We're going to start now with the first order of new business, which is discussion of the policy P 5112.2, admission requirements. I'm going to turn it over to Susan, who may let Ms. Cassini say something.
Yes, I might. So, um, we actually have been reviewing these policies pretty regularly. And Lauren, with all the different hats she wears, she works very closely with the enrollment, and she actually oversees the registrar and that front office. It's, you know, meeting people, as does Rebecca BS help out with lottery and family engagement. So the whole team works together. And when we find little glitches in our system that need a little correcting, to make sure it's crystal clear to our families what are the documents we need and what are the things that they have to bring to us. You know, they're kind of staying ahead of the game. So I'll turn it over to you, Lauren, and saying, you know, in looking at what are some of the different things that we've seen that need a little corrective action.
Okay. Would you like me to share my screen, or does everyone have their copies in front of them?
Why don't you put it on the screen for the benefit of anybody who might want to watch this online?
Absolutely. Just get to this. There we go. Can you guys see that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So really, there are just minor changes to this policy that need to be made, and it's more, as a response to some things that have come up that just need to be tightened up. The overall policy looks good. It's strong. It's, um, families understand what the expectations are. So I am going to scroll down. If you look at the documents for proof of residency, there's a column A and column B. It's on page two of four. Um, and you'll notice that the, the changes are in green. Really, it's just a matter of adding the language current before residential rental or lease, or current before mortgage statement, because what's happening is we're getting old statements that don't validate or prove that residence is currently happening with these families. So just putting that language in there, it helps them to know exactly what to bring when they come. It's posted on our website. We include it right on the application when they're registering for schools, or they have a change of address. So again, it's just, it prevents like having for families to do an extra step if they bring in any residential agreement or mortgage statement versus one that's current, so to date. The other change is adding the within 180 days to the escrow, because at that point, by the time, you know, there's a resident residential purchase or escrow, within 180 days of that, you typically have your first mortgage statement or what, what have you. So we thought that that might help, um, keep the language consistent. And again, going back to that whole current idea, right? Making sure that it's as up to date as possible. And the last change in, in column A is for home offer letter. You see, it used to be called the letter of intent. That's just a change that came through beacon points. They're not referring to them as letter of intents anymore. They're referring them to home offer letter. So we want our language to align with what would be produced or given to the families, so that they know exactly what it is we're, we're expecting from them as a military family who may not have the other items from column A. And that's, those are the only changes on this policy.
Can I offer a couple of observations?
Yeah.
Okay, on number, uh, column A, the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, notarized residency affidavit star. Because the star appears on the next page, I would offer for your consideration having notarized residency affidavit, space, bracket, star, see next page, bracket, so that there's no confusion about the person needing to look at, at the instructions on the following page.
I'm just wondering. Yeah, that we can do that. I mean, that, that's, I'm, I'm thinking about in terms of like, so, because we copy and paste it onto our application as well, just so family knows exactly which documents to bring. We don't necessarily copy and paste the whole policy. So I was worried that that could be confusing, um.
But this is for, this would be for our policy statement, not for the application form.
Yeah. Yep. No, which is why I think that would be okay. So you're, you'd like the, the star, see next page, in parentheses?
In brackets, brackets, parentheses, whatever, ellipsis, whatever you want.
See, next page.
And then on the next page, if the student's family member is living with another family in Groton, colon, you have number one, very, very clear. But the next one, the person completing this affidavit must provide, isn't that, shouldn't that be number two?
Um, I don't know if that would be a number two, because it's like, and it's an additional, it's not another step. It's more the responsible, responsibility of the person who's completing the affidavit. If you wanted to change that, I almost feel like it would need to be like 1A, and then a, uh, one, do you know what I mean? So instead of it being like a number two.
If it's, if, if that's what you want, that's fine with me, in which case we should take away the colon and just make the sentence continue, in Groton, the comma, the person they are living with must complete. Because the colon indicates there's going to be a series of events, a series of categories. Andrea, am I channeling you correctly?
I'm sorry, I was, I was drifting in, in space, because I don't think I'm looking at what you're talking about.
Oh, because I didn't.
On the next page, we're, we.
I apologize here. We, we moved to this page. There you go.
Okay, where are we?
So right here at the top.
See, it says that the family is living with another family. We have a colon, followed by number one. And the following paragraph, starting the person completing the affidavit, seems related to me, to the colon. So it could be handled one of two ways. Either make the number one just part of the, of the, make the whole thing a number one part of the introductory.
Lauren, can you point to the, to the colon? I don't see it. Where am I?
Right here.
Oh, all right. The student, I think. The student's family is living with another family in Groton. Person they are living with must complete.
To be the family they are living with.
Yeah, uh. I think it should just, just be a comma. Because if, if the, if the student, that's an introductory adverbal clause.
So get rid of the number one and make that one complete sentence?
I think so, unless the, the second paragraph, beginning the person completing, is in fact part of the asterisk. If it's not, if it's discrete, then we should make the top one a single sentence.
One, the person they are living with must complete the notarized residency affidavit. Two, the person completing the affidavit. It's like step two, and I, well, I could be talked into either way. Susan, do you have a preference on this? No. Okay.
I kind of agree.
Why don't you figure it out and choose the way you want, but it, it can't be both. You, you, if we have a colon, then we have a series of things. If we don't have a colon, then we take the number one out. You, I don't care.
You know, the colon, you do the one, and then, like Matthew had said, then the person who's completing it, number two. And then that would be A, B, that they bring the photo. They could do it either way.
I think.
Why don't you do it the way you're gonna, you want to do it, and then send it to me, and I'll get it right back to you.
Okay, yeah.
That sounds perfect.
Yep. But so adding the language, so I'll make those, uh, quick adjustments there, and adding the language with the current to the residential that, that's okay with you, and they'll change the language of home offer letter from letter of intent.
Sounds fine to me prior to the book. One last thing, under, on page two, it says intra-district magnet student, a magnet school that serves only students who reside within the boundaries. That's not true. We have tuition students.
Those aren't, those aren't intra-district magnet students, though. Tuition students are different. And this is, hold on, wait, hold on. So which one are you looking at? Intra-district?
Intra, intra-district.
So those are students who live within our boundaries.
Okay, got it. My bad.
No, no, that's okay. I know, it's a lot to to sort out. Okay. And then the second policy. So if you're all set with that, would you like me to move on to the next poli, like, policy?
Sure. Unless you'd like to, are there any regulations that go with, with this one?
No.
Okay. What's the committee's pleasure? Do you want to listen to the second one or vote on the first one first? Andrea and Ian, what's your pleasure?
Well, it makes sense to me that what she's got here, and it makes sense to Susan. And how about everybody else?
So, unless Ian, unless you have an objection, I'll ask for a vote on P 5112.2?
Yeah, I have no objection.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on P 5112.2? Hearing none, I'll ask all those in favor of passing policy 5112.2, admission requirements for Groton residents for first reading to the, uh, regular meeting of the Board of Education, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we're three to zero to zero, and that is passed to go to the full Board of Education. Thank you, number one, Lauren. Let's rock on.
Thank you. Okay, so the second one, P 5118, it, it deals with our students who are non-resident attendants, non-resident attendants. Um, and so again, this is just cleaning up language. This one really has been more of a concern of us lately. What we've run into in the last several months is really significant increase of students exiting Groton public schools, but remaining within the schools and this district paying for these students until the end of the year based on the current policy, which states that any child that exits the school after January 1st of that year can remain per superintendent's request. And so we've looked at this language some, and we feel that it, it would be in our best interest as a district to maybe revise the length of time we're going to allow that. So I'm going to scroll down to that specific area where we've made those changes. And this is specific to students, non-resident attendants without tuition, right? So these are, again, our kids who maybe moved to New London or Legerd, but want to continue or finish out the year in Groton. So the language we change is in number two, and we've added, um, that we've taken out that January 1st language, and in place of it, during or after spring break. So anyone who moves out of our district during or after spring break, um, we will allow to stay. So anyone before that needs to then move on to their new district. And this is, this is common practice in all the surrounding districts. I mean, we, they don't even necessarily allow kids to stay, even at this time of year.
Right. I would say it's very generous, even with the April break. No one else did the half year, and that can be very pricey for a district, especially if you have an outplaced child or a child who has significant needs. So, um, I would say even Legerd, they might allow them to finish, if they leave in May, for one month. But we've always been super generous, and this still, I think, gets the kid, gets the student till the end of the year, if they're moving during April break.
Yeah. And it is. I mean, this, this can, this can be a burden to our district. I mean, these are students that, you know, we're paying for, and in some cases, there may be some, some high-priced payments happening with, if they receive services of any kind. So it really is in our interest to update it to, to match the surrounding districts. Um, the next one, number three, a family residing outside of the district that has planned, firm plans to move into the district. Initially, it was the, during the current school year, and that is really wide open. Um, and so we want to put a limit on that, and we want to say, if you have plans to move into the district, firm plans within 30 days of registration, um, as evidenced by a contract to buy. So we haven't moved yet, but we're moving into the district within 30 days. Um, you can begin the year then.
That makes sense. A lot of sense.
Okay, good, all right. And so.
Yeah, it's like this all seems fair and transparent.
Matthew, did you have a question?
I have a couple of questions, but I want to be sure Ian and Andrea have a chance first.
No, I'm done.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good as well. Um, it seems like it just cleans up some ambiguity and narrows some windows, but defines them clearly.
So, I'm very good with the intent. I have a couple of questions on language. Under non-resident attendants without tuition, the last word is conditions, the following conditions. I don't see these as conditions. I see these as circumstances. What do you think?
I think that I have no issue with that.
Okay.
Would you like that changed?
I think so, because a condition, a condition is, if you do this, this will happen. If you do that, that'll happen. We're setting up strictures. And we're not setting up strictures. We're just defining the reality under which they're going to function.
I'm in support of that suggestion.
Thank you. These, on, on, uh, both two and three, a family moves from the district. Yeah, that one's, that one's absolutely fine. The, the next one, I'm thinking about a way to, I think, I find the sentence a bit cumbersome. So I'll offer you another sentence for number three. Say number two. Okay. Number two, a family moves from the district during or after spring recess in April of the school year. And if parents so requi, period, however, if parents so request, a children may complete the current school year.
Wait, wait. When we move from the district during or after spring break? I don't know if we should do April, because, you know, what if we change that? What if it happens in March, or even May? Spring break, yeah, spring. Yeah, I mean, you know what I mean. What if we change the date? Just spring recess.
Oh, okay. Take the April out?
I think. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I think that's prudent, Andrea, because if, you know, some year they decide they want to go back to what we used to call winter break.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And then we'll change it to winter recess, I guess. But we, we did have two, two, one winter, uh, break and, and then a spring break.
I just think we break it in, into a period after the word school year and make capital however. Just simplify the.
However, you're not supposed to begin a sentence with however.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I was thinking the same thing.
Welcome, welcome.
So just leave it the way it is, semicolon, however, comma.
Okay.
For number two?
For number two.
Yeah.
Do we even need, so I, now that you've brought it up, I'm, I'm rethinking this myself. Do we need it to, to read? Because up in the top, at the very beginning, it says upon written parental request, right? So in sentence two, it says of the school year, however, if parents so request, a child may complete the school year. This actually should say with superintendent approval, a child may.
Right?
It seems. And where are we again? I'm sorry.
So we're right here on number two.
Okay.
Okay, we're on this sentence. And, and if you look, a, a family moves from the district during or after the spring recess in April. Oh, we're getting rid of that. After the spring recess of the school year. It says, however, if a parent so requests, a child may complete this current school year.
It is a bit redundant. It's not harmful, but it is redundant, because we're not going to have a third grader make a request to the superintendent. It's going to be the parent or guardian that makes the request.
Well, but we could say, instead of if parents so request, I'm actually thinking what needs to really be here is upon superintendent approval.
That's, that's above, that's above the word for the, for the circumstances. May be allowed by the superintendent, may be allowed. That requires the superintendent's approval.
Right. But it says may up there, and I'm just wondering, does it make sense to have it put upon, right? So you might be accepted, or you might be approved, right? It's not, it's upon approval, or no, just leave it as is. Am I reading into this too much now?
I, I trust, I'll trust you and Susan to choose the language that satisfies you, subject to the agreement of my colleagues.
Okay.
Lauren, if you do that, Lauren, if you do that, then you would have to put it for one, two, three, four, five, six.
You're right.
So I think it says it in the first statement, pretty clearly.
It does. Okay. All right, so let's leave that.
So, let's not leave it. I'm, I'm just thinking of grammar. Put a period after a school year.
Hmm.
Uh, take of the however.
Yep.
Start with, with if parents so, uh, uh, request, or is that request? Yeah, request, comma, however, comma. And, and put the, yeah, put the, the, insert the, uh, however there. That's where it belongs.
But Andrea, that takes away the superintendent's authority to say no, because it's a matter of policy. That just making the request guarantees that action to happen.
Right.
Upon parent request with superintendent approval, a child may.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's better. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you. Go ahead.
Again, just send it to me, and I'll stick the however wherever it belongs, if it belongs at all.
Okay, sounds good.
The last thing I have is.
Matthew, can I just say something else?
Please, please, I'm sorry.
Maybe in that sentence too, and in every though, every one of those sentences, you might want to put, uh, with superintendent's, um, if superintendent allows the student to do that, um, you know, you could word it whatever way. Because now it seems like if parents so request, a child may complete the school year, but that's not so. If, if the superintendent has to approve it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But the way the sentence reads, it means, it means like, if the parents make the request, then it, then they could complete the school year. So I think Lauren was right by adding, um, you, um, with superintendent approval, or with the approval of the superintendent.
So, let me, let me, uh, offer another language, because the, the one through six are all subsets of the sentence above with a colon. So what the stricture we want should be in the sentence above with a colon. Non-resident students may be allowed, comma, with the superintendent's approval, comma, to attend district schools without tuition under one of the following circumstances.
Yeah. Yep.
Then that really connects it. Yeah. I like that.
Me too.
Anything more, Beth?
Now, thank you, Matthew, for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Always. On page two, evidence of residency, my reading of that is it seemed quite redundant to the residency requirements of the, uh, of, uh, the other document, uh, 5112.
So this is a little different, though. Um, the difference here has to do with, these are students that potentially do not live within the district. And we're determining that they don't live in the district, like maybe they're not forthright with information.
That would never happen.
So that's, that's what this particular paragraph really kind of addresses. Um, but as we were going through, we found that the language was, it, it wasn't clear, like, from a family's perspective. It needed to be cleaned up just a little bit, so that it made sense to, to anyone who is reading this.
If you don't see it redundant, I don't see it redundant.
Right? So this is basically saying, we're not sure you're, you're truly a resident of Groton. We need additional documentation, or we need you to prove that. Um, so where the other one is really about registering students and how we register students, this piece here is really about students who are already currently within our district, but we have some questions about, you know, the accuracy of, of the residence.
It's almost like, it's like that complaint that we got about the basketball player, where you had some questions about the residency of the student.
Right.
And we're, we're on evidence of residency, right?
Right. Yes. Can you see that on my screen? I just want to make sure.
Yes, you have a note to that.
Yep. Okay.
Undo this.
Yeah.
Can you, can you make it a little bigger?
Yeah, let me see.
If not, okay.
No, I, I can't, hold on.
Okay, that's okay.
There we go.
There we go.
Oh, wow. All right. Thank you.
I'm just going to pull it up so you can see it better.
Perfect.
Okay, how is that?
That sounds fine.
Okay. And so again, there is no real change to the content here.
Anybody have any more comments?
Nope. I'm still reading.
Uh, take your time, take your time.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I think this is helps, uh, you know, tighten up the language and clean up any ambiguities that have been perceived in the past. So I have no objection. I'm in support of the, uh, changes as they stand.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, looks good.
Looks good. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you. So it looks like I'm just going to make some quick adjustments on the, on page one of this page to include with the superintendent approval. Um, and then on, right, that's it for that, and then just that tightened language there.
Yeah, and send it to me again, because I'm looking at the word why here, and I'm questioning about, you, you know, explaining why. I think it should be explaining that, but I really, I, I really want to look at it just to perfect it. Okay. I won't change any of the meaning.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, don't go away yet, Lauren. We, job's not done, so the paper's signed. So, uh, if there's. So if there's no more discussion, I'll uh ask all those in favor of adopting P fifty-one eighteen, non-resident attendance for approval to the full Board of Education for first reading. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we have passed this three to zero to zero. I thank you. And I just note for the record uh that Bev joined, because if you were here at the beginning, I missed it, so.
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so here's here's the plan if you guys are in accord. Uh, I know we need to take up evaluation after athletic coaches. Uh, that that that's still on, uh, Susan?
Yes, I see Mark Romano is with us.
Oh, hi, Mark. Thank you. So I want to, it's it's now six thirty. I want to limit discussion on AI to a maximum of an hour so that we definitely have time to get to Mark, and I think that's okay.
Can we do Mark right now so he doesn't have to stay? I know he probably has a very busy afternoon. Because I think there's just one.
If.
That's what I was gonna say. Why is Mark sticking around through AI? That's not not.
I'm fine with switching up the order.
Would somebody like to make a motion to uh suspend the order and move up uh old business item A for discussion in uh now?
So move, so move, Thomas.
Second.
Okay, was there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask her vote to suspend the order. All those in favor of suspending the order say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all those opposed, no, so the order's changed three to O to O. Lauren, you're welcome to stay, or she's left. Okay, I was gonna tell. But I guess she had other fish to fry.
I I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to make sure that Mark felt comfortable staying after his conversation to talk AI as well. I'm more than happy to engage with him, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, Mark, I I didn't mean that you shouldn't stay. I just meant that you could split if you wanted.
No, thanks. We got we actually got a lacrosse game going, so that works for it. Okay, well, welcome, Mark, and thank you very much for coming back. But could we put up the document? Uh, hang on.
This is P four-one-one-five-point-three, evaluation.
I know, I just, Matthew's husband has his organization and he is.
Did Mark come back with anything that the committee asked him to come back with?
Well, that's what I we we have a revised version of it.
Okay.
Uh, if we could put it up on the screen, that would be a place pointed departure. Does that answer your question, Bev?
If if I I didn't see it, so when I when you put it up, I'll take a look at it.
Okay. Do you have that, Kate? Or Susan?
Um. Is is Kate there?
Yep, I have. As the one you sent me was the.
The one I sent you now was the one I did this afternoon on AI.
Yeah, that's the only one I have.
That's the only one you have.
Mark, you don't have the policy, do you?
Um, is that the one I most recently sent you, right?
Yes. Four-one-one-five-point-three, yeah.
Let's see, if you could email it to Kate, she'll be able to put it up. And I think that should be the routine.
Kate, does Joyce send you the agendas with all the attachments each week? You and Mark?
I don't believe so.
I'll ask her to do that so that you always have it. I usually remind her, but I'll just have her do it as a routine.
If you want to give me a minute, I can locate mine and send it to her. And if you don't have it, Mark. Yeah, I'm trying to find it. So if you have it on hand, it might be quicker. Okay, give me a minute and I will. Thank you. There it is.
Yep, I got it. I converted it to Word too, so that we can edit it live.
Okay, thank you, Ian. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So Mark, it's up to Susan, but Susan, it's up for you to take the ball or ask Mark to explain what he's done?
Yeah, I'll go on and and shift the baton to Mark to explain.
Okay, Mark, I'd like you to go over everything as if we didn't have the last meeting, because if somebody's watching this who didn't watch the last meeting, they'll be able to have the full context.
All right, one second. So basically, the talks in here, this is just the policy and, you know, the evaluation of coaches, which is done by the athletic director or whoever the coach's immediate supervisor would be. Uh, could be the principal or or whoever it may be, but it just talks about the purpose of it with the evaluations, the purpose of the evaluation. Um, I don't think you can scroll down a little bit on that. You know, recommendations moving forward, basically specific to the um the coach, you know, after being evaluated by the athletic director. Um, there's also some, I also have some stuff I'd like to input into it as well as part of the process, like kind of defines what an athletic coach is uh clearly laid out and how they're evaluated, um which I don't know if it's in that part. Uh, part of the process would be the coach would do the self-evaluation of themselves and then go over that with the, you know, administrator or athletic director who the who would be doing the evaluation.
And that's just like what we do with teachers.
Yep.
And administrators when we do evaluations.
And this should be done um on an annual basis, normally after the season has been completed. Um, also, you know, coaches are evaluated at any point in time during different athletic contests, whether it's by the athletic director or other administration. Um, so, you know, I want to mention that as well. They're probably critiqued more so than anyone. You know, there's always that uh Monday morning quarterback where everybody thinks they know better and can do it better. Um, those types of things, but, you know, the the overall evaluation of a coach, um, like I said, is done annually. Uh, done within ninety days of the completion of the season. Um, and then recommendations are made from that point. Whether, you know, uh, whether it's a support plan, which it would be outlined by, you know, the person doing the evaluation. Uh, you know, areas of improvement, um, as well as, you know, whether they're going to continue um as a athletic coach or not, that would be up to part of that evaluation process. Um, like I said, or an improvement plan, we want to continue having them as as an athletic coach, but there are some areas of improvement. That's also part of the evaluation process. Or if there would be, you know, termination of the coach, um, which again would have to be done within that ninety-day period. And, you know, having a having that discussion, that one-on-one discussion with them about the process. So that's that's kind of where we're at.
And what is the appeals process? If the coach is not happy with it?
So a coach, um, basically there would be a appeal and a hearing. And this is something that, you know, would be part of like our regulations, I think. You know, there would have to be, you know, a um there's, you know, if the coach served in the same capacity for three or more years, so going into their fourth year, they would they would be considered coaching tenure. And then they would have the right to for a due process hearing, um, which they would have to put in writing to the athletic director and superintendent.
Questions from Ian or Andrea? Or Bev?
I don't I don't think so.
If Mark, is that standard practice?
Yes, yep. It's actually, uh, it's been in play basically since two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with this. Um, I think, you know, good minor adjustments were made and and it seems to cover the basics and like Mark said, a lot of the details um would be covered in regulations. I look forward to getting a chance to see those when they're ready.
Yeah. Are are you planning to go look over the regulations tonight, Susan and and Mark, or we're going to come back for that? It's not, we don't have any authority over it. It's just been the superintendent's given us the privilege of commenting on it, and she sometimes even thinks we have something useful to say.
So, Mark, I think the best thing to do is to pull the regulations together so you and I can look at it and then I can share it with the board.
Sure.
Just for them to see. You know, it's kind of interesting. That's sometimes where we'll put the documents of the self-evaluation, what that looks like, just like I when we did our new evaluation plan for teaching, I sent it out to the board so you could see the whole package of what the expectation is and um and it really does mirror what we're doing currently with the teachers. Although the teacher's plan is a little more, because it's a full-year plan. There's a intro, a beginning, and a mid-year and an end year.
And and part of the regulations too outline like the the specific of what an athletic coach is and about the employment and evaluation. It'll be more specific in there.
And it defines things, so it does make things clearer for you.
Yep. Yeah, so I think once that's shared with you, it'll even give you a clear understanding of exactly the evaluation process and how they're viewed and things like that, the hearing process, so on and so forth.
Okay, uh, are we, I'm gonna give everybody all the time they need. Is there any more comments, observations?
No, I just want to say thank you. Thank Mark for the efforts and everyone on this, and I think we got a good foundation here to build on.
Yeah, and again, just send it to me for comma, commas, as it were. Yeah. Amatizing. And and it may be perfectly fine, but I did see one place where there was, there needed to be an extra comma, but I'll.
Once the English teacher, always the English.
I know.
You know, once you're off the board, we can hire you as our chief grammarian. Maybe Department of Grammar. Anyway.
I do that for free.
I know, I know. So all those who are in favor of passing um P forty-one fifteen-point-three, evaluation of athletic coaches as submitted for transmission to the full Board of Education for a first reading, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we did have the first reading. We were going to.
I think this is the second reading.
This is the second reading. So I amend that, uh, Joan, it's it's uh transmitting P forty-one fifteen-point-three, evaluation of athletic coaches for a second reading. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
I I just have a question. I know that I've had, and maybe this isn't relevant here, but I know that I've had several conversations uh with another board member about, you know, the intent of of um, why why child participates in sports to begin with, and and it isn't just to win. You know, it's to build character and you know, Mark, how do you how do you account for that? You know, like, what if you got this guy that's just getting in there, you know, win, 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 and and forget about you know, you know, the kid that really doesn't play well, but just, I mean, doesn't play like the star. But, you know, is giving it his all. Uh, you know, like, how do you how do you look at the 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 coach in terms of that?
How how would I? Well, I think number one, I mean, high school sports are not all obviously about winning to begin with. I mean, you know, we're we're here just like, you know, an extension of the classroom and an education-based athletic program. You know, focusing on academics, the character of the students, the academic piece to it. Um, you know, and challenging them and developing them through adversity and 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 other, you know, and teamwork and things like that. So, you know, I think I have not really truthfully encountered so far, I guess I could say, a coach that's all about winning. I think they they understand the development. I mean, you know, you have uh teams that are, you know, young, uh, senior-heavy, you know, all over, all across the board. And I think it's, you know, making a connection with each individual kid. Um, working with them, improving their skills, not only as a student athlete, um, but, you know, as a member of the team, whatever team that may be. So, you know, I I think I would have a problem with a coach who, you know, was all about winning because it's unrealistic. I mean, you know, there's some sports you're gonna, you know, you're gonna have good seasons and not so good seasons, but, you know, I'm looking for development. I'm looking for uh consistency. I'm looking for um making our athletes into better student athletes, like that. That's what it's about. You know, and and hopefully giving them the skills after high school to go on and and use some of the skills that they learned within that sport to be successful in in their life, whatever that may be, whether it's, you know, a trade, a a business job, college, whatever it may be. So that's that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, so so when, so when you get somebody who's just like not doing that, how how do you how do you deal with that individual?
It's it's, you know, like I said previously, like, I'm in constant communication with these coaches on a daily basis. And and we have honest conversations about where we're at, you know, whether it's each team. You know, we talk after the games, you know, every coach sends me an update, so I know where we're at, who they're working with, um, you know, how how we're developing kids. Um, you know, like I said, both as students and as athletes. Um, you know, and and if if we did have a coach who was like that, I think having that, again, being having that honest conversation. You know, being realistic, like, if we are having success and we are winning, that's great because, you know, we we have also been on the other side of it as well when we're struggling at times and, you know, I'm looking for development improvement throughout the course of the season. You know, it's not necessarily about, you know, this game or that game. It's about, you know, the process and what that looks like. And 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 that's what it's about, holding kids accountable. Um, you know, and developing good student athletes. That's what that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, so so you do have those conversations about with the coaches about building character. That's all.
Oh, hundred percent, yep. And actually, I uh I just made a connection, not to get off topic, but, you know, with, we had our military game last week. And I'm actually working on something, speaking of character and leadership uh with the National Guard about, you know, bringing our kids there. They would, you know, bring them through a course on leadership and and kind of have lunch with them and talk to them about, you know, what that looks like. And so, you know, we're we're developing more than just winning winning teams, you know, that which is again unrealistic. We're trying to develop these students and student athletes and and, you know, all the fundamentals and things that go along with sports.
Okay, thank you.
I see. I recognize Ian. I'd like to recognize Ian.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, Mark, to to build on what you were saying. Appreciate all that. And I think in other previous conversations about this, you mentioned, there's like a student athlete handbook. Is that is that that's a thing?
Yes, definitely. It's online, um, on our middle school website.
And a lot of these concepts and practices, the more holistic approach to developing character, is that addressed in the handbook in various sections?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
There's the actual code of conduct that the students will sign.
Right.
And, yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's very, you know, it reminds me, the teachers also have a professional code of conduct. And, um, you know, and students have a student code of conduct.
Yeah, but that's not holding the coach responsible.
No.
I'll be I'll be quiet.
But they have a professional code of conduct.
Okay.
Right, I guess so. So my question would be, uh, you know, is there something that's parallel um for coaches? Or uh i- is it is something about the coaching, the coach's responsibility mentioned in the student handbook?
Uh, no, no, the student handbook's specifically made for the students, but I do have an athletic coaching handbook, which uh, I, you know, we have available for our coaches, uh, especially when we read, when we hire them, they get this. It outlines everything, our policies, our, um, you know, the code of conduct for coaches, um, you know, all all different things, all different aspects, so.
And and there's parallel language, you know, as far as like what, you know, about character development and all that stuff? Yeah.
Correct.
That's parallel stuff in the coach's handbook as well?
Yes, yep.
All right, perfect. Yeah, so I I feel like I'm 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 satisfied with my concerns along those lines, and I I want to thank Andrea for bringing that up.
And Beverly?
Yeah, Mark, um, have you um encouraged your coach, like a football coach that has a lot of kids that play, have you encouraged them to try to play everybody on that team? And so students aren't just sitting on the bench all year long. And so students aren't just sitting on the bench all year long, maybe for two or three years, not playing, but just sitting on the bench. Have you encouraged them to make sure everybody gets a chance to play?
You know, honestly, I think that's where, um, we have different levels of every sports program. You know, you have your freshman JV and varsity. So I, I, I think that's where the opportunities come into play. You know, at the varsity level, it's a little bit different than say a freshman or a JV level where, you know, the freshman level is much about, you know, at sometimes introduction to the sport, um, developing, you know, the basic concepts or skills for that sport. And then as you progress, you know, the JV program, you know, we're getting a little bit closer. Maybe you're not ready there, but that's where kids are kind of fine tuning their skills and hopefully preparing themselves to make that jump to the varsity level. So, you know, I think, like I said, there's, you know, there's different levels. And I think each kid kind of fits into that level, whether they're a JV kid, a varsity kid, or, or in some cases, a freshman athlete.
How does the middle school, how does the middle school program weave into the high school program as far, they have both intermurals and inter-scholastic? How does that work as far as playtime?
Well, at the, at the middle school level, you know, it's, it's more, you know, those kids are playing. Um, you know, our, our middle school coaches and high school coaches are in communication about, you know, the development of these kids. They work together at certain skills that, you know, the high school coach is looking for from the middle school coach. And sometime, and a lot of times even youth coaches within our community. So it's that constant communication, I think, at all different levels in the development of those kids. And, you know, trying to get them obviously prepared for the varsity level. So, you know, we have a lot of sports where kids are just learning the sport. So that's what that freshman or JV level is for. And then, you know, as coaches, we're developing those skills, you know, the goal is for them to be varsity players at the end. And, you know, there's certain situations for every kid, you know, maybe, you know, maybe they're a sub, maybe they're, uh, you know, whatever it may be. So, you know, it's a development process.
So are you saying on each level, each student gets to play a fair amount of time? That's what I'm.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, it depends upon the coach and what, you know, the competitiveness of, of that program as well. And where they see individual kids fit. I mean, you know, high school sports, high school sports aren't about, you know, necessarily everybody getting the same and fair amount of playing time. You know, we're also looking at, you know, the, the amount of work that the kids are putting in, how hard they're working in practice, the development that they're making. Some kids are developing faster than others, you know, where they fit in with the program. So like I said, it's, it varies, um, I would say from a kid to kid.
Mark, may I come in, come in? I think what I'm hearing, uh, everybody's saying is we, and these are my words, I'm not speaking for them. It's just what I'm hearing. We're not trying to get into the operational aspect of macro managing your program. I think what we're talking about is a policy of participation. And, um, maybe this is something we can, that, that is, may not be related to the evaluation of coaches. But I think it's something we might want to discuss at some point with you. Is there a certain threshold, whether it's five percent, 10%, 30%? It would vary from sport to sort. Is there a, a, a threshold of participation that every Groton student could expect? That if he or she works hard, they will be able to play irrespective, a certain amount irrespective of their capacity or agility. But I don't think that has to do with the evaluation. So I'll put that in the parking lot. But I would like to comment because the question that you asked Andrea is one that I asked Mr. Romano in an April fifth letter. And I'll just read one sentence. The question I think I was getting at at that point is, quote, what is the measure of success for any coach? And Mark very graciously wrote me a, a, a long letter, which included a vision statement, a mission statement, and a philosophy statement. Now, where that goes, I'm not sure whether that goes in the, uh, coach's handbook. Whether that goes as a introduction to the policy statement, I'm not clear on. But I want to congratulate Mark for what he, he did. I just want to be sure that all the coaches have the benefit at the time of their employee and every year at seeing what he did. Mark, can you give some feedback?
Sure. So I actually updated what I sent you as well. So and, and when I send you the regulations out, because I weaved in, um, after talking with Susan a little bit, you know, our values of the school and rise. So I kind of weave those into the mission statement as well. And I'll, I'll share that with you, uh, with the regulations. But yeah, no, every year we review this and we have a coaches meeting for every season, fall, winter and spring. And these are the topics that we go over. Part of it is the mission, you know, our mission statement, what we can expect, um, you know, what we're looking to accomplish, um, in our values as coaches. So.
I would ask some guidance from, from my chair and also get Susan's input on whether, uh, we would be trespassing into operations if we were to view the vision and mission statement as policy, as, as a policy thing that directs our coaches on what the district's expectations are. Uh, I, I have no quarrel with what, what Mark's doing. I, I just not sure. And it may already be doing it, and I'm just ignorant of the coach's handbook. But what, what, what I've heard everybody say is we do have expectations beyond the athleticism. And they, there's some place that they should be expressed.
Right.
Right.
Well, I would say that the next step is Mark and I will review the regulations and vision statements. And we can certainly pass them out to the board. And we can actually talk about it in a board note.
Well, I, I would like, I would like a committee, I would like a committee to have an opportunity to visit with you on the regulations.
Okay.
Be- before it goes to the board, because every once in a while you've said to us, well, that's not a bad idea. So.
I know I do.
I would have that input.
Matthew, can you send us that letter that you referred it to?
Yes, I, 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 I did send it to everybody. Uh, I sent it on March fourth, I'm sorry, April fifth rather, to Mark with copies to Andrea, Ian, Bev and Susan.
All right.
His email to me on April fourth. I'm sorry, Friday, April fourth, that same evening, he wrote back to me with copies to Susan, Andrea and Ian and Bev.
I'll look for it.
Yeah.
So if you don't, if you can't find them, I will be able to get copies to you.
I do, I do recall that exchange and I did, I did review it at the time and I appreciate your efforts, both Matthew and Mark on that. Uh, I did find the communications enlightening and insightful. I remember those. Yep. Thank you.
I gotta tell you, Mark, I was really impressed with what you gave me and the fact that you've gone beyond that. Uh, kudos to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. And if you send it again, I have no idea what, what happened. I don't know.
Okay. We'll take care of that, Andrea. Don't you fret. Are we ready for a vote on this?
Yeah. What do you think?
Ian, anything more? Or shall we take a vote on?
No, I'm good. Let's proceed.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, right, we voted on moving it, we moved in the agenda. So now we're voting on, uh, we're asking for all those in favor of sending policy, not, because right now it says policy and, and regulations. We're deleting the word regulations, just policy on to the, um, full board. Policy P forty-one fifteen point three, evaluation of athletic coaches onto the full board for a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. So that passes three to zero to zero. Susan, uh, would the regulations be an agenda item for our June meeting or do you need more time?
Um, Mark, maybe you and I will figure out a time when I'm coming over to the high school anyway. And we can sit down and even go over it with Matt too.
Yep.
So we'll look at our calendars and if I can get it in, you know, before then I can certainly bring it to you guys.
Okay. That sounds wonderful. Mark, have a wonderful evening.
Yeah, thank you. We gotta get out to this lacrosse game. Well, thanks for moving me up on the agenda.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night.
And I need to mark a note to get the forty-one, no, not the, not the thing, to get the email exchange to Mark. Email exchange with Mark to Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did AI read, write the next policy on AI?
You'll have to ask, you'll have to ask Kate.
In a way it did, and I'll get to that in a minute. It is now seven oh four. Would you like to keep going or would you like a five minute break? Cause some people.
I want to keep going.
Me too.
I haven't had dinner.
I'm fine. I'm fine.
Keep rolling.
Yeah.
Kate, could you put up the document? Let me tell you a little bit of back, the background of this document that you're going to see. Um, and Clint, you just pop in whenever you want. Clint and I and Jody Goller, Jody is the policy person at CADE, met, uh, last month to try to discuss the framework around which a policy could be clothed. Uh, there are, to my knowledge, only two AI policies in the state. There may be more, but I'm not aware of them. One is Weston and the other one is, uh, the Connecticut Technical Education and Career System as a Student Use of Artificial Intelligence Technology Policies. Uh, I did include these to you in a packet, a background packet that I sent out last week. Uh, their comments were not incorporated into what you'll see tonight. So the what you see in green, except for the word and challenges, which I inserted, is what Clint and Anne Marie put together as a first pass well before Clint and Jody and I got together. Based on what Clint, Jody and I did to the best of my capacity. I put together, and everything that's in red represents, um, the first paragraph in red that says, uh, the policy establishes guidelines, uh, that I added to the statement of needs and purposes. And it is redundant between the two paragraphs in green and the red in, uh, in, in the first paragraph below. I did not want to massage what Clint and Marie did on my own. I wanted us to have the, all three paragraphs for us to work on as a group. Then what I did to answer your question, Susan, after working at putting together a policy for two weeks, my wife said, this is about artificial intelligence. Why did you use artificial intelligence? So I did, I went, used four different platforms. And I share this with Clint, I used four different AI platforms and asked them, I finally found a query, asked them to help me formulate a policy for appropriate student use of technology for a K-12 institution, et cetera, et cetera. And I got four different versions. And then I spent time using it the way I hope our students will use AI, not as a solution, but as part of a process of educating themselves. And I put together all the rest of the red based on the assemblage of those four platforms. So yes, I used artificial intelligence. And it's a lot smarter than I.
Matthew, I think in your first paragraph, you have leaning on the third sentence. I think it should be learning.
The which paragraph, the green or the?
The green, right there.
No, that's a typo. That's a typo on my part. That's a typo. It should be learning. Thank you. I missed that. Uh, you do not want to hire me to be your secretary.
So Matthew, I, apologies for diving in, but how, how do we want to structure this conversation? Would, is it your preference that, that the committee review kind of this document that you've put together? Or, or, or something else? Cause I, I.
Well, okay, what I had in mind, uh, I thought I communicated it, but sometimes I don't do as well as I hope. I would like us to, to define what things are important that would be in a policy. And, and those, the ones that I'm recommending are the, the, uh, starting on page two. Can you go up to page two, Kate? So we start out with a mandated policy review, ensuring information accuracy and reliability. How do we want, what do we want our policy to consist of? If we're successful tonight at our, at a, at a reasonably deep dive on categories we want to develop, then the language that we use under them will be a lot easier to deal with. So I would like to get our skeleton or to use grammatical terms, I'd like to take the sentence apart and find out where the prepositional phrases are that, that we need to hang the sentence together. Am I making any sense to you guys? Ian, please.
I didn't get that, but in the conversation to follow, I'm sure it'll come out.
Ian?
Um, I'm, I'm just kind of taking this all in for the moment. Um, so I mean, I, I kind of get the general gist of what you're saying, but, um.
Well, why don't we just take a look at the policy and just read it over, not to go to, to massage it for grammar or anything.
Yeah.
Just, just say, do we think we need a mandated policy review? As a very first pass of reading it once, is there anything in there that is really bizarre and needs to come out? Something that needs to be added? Let's, let's see if we can put the clothes on this policy one piece at a time. And then later, this can take us a couple of months, because we've got a lot of other things to do besides AI. It's going to take us a couple of months. My goal is to have it to the, uh, board for a first reading around September, October, November. You know, it's a lot of work. Then the next one is ensuring information accuracy and reliability. Does that, does that seem an important thing to the, to the committee members?
I think in this day and age, it's probably more relevant than any other day and age in history.
Yeah. So that's what I'd like us to do today. This is our get acquainted, this is our get acquainted visit with a very rough first draft, very, very rough first draft.
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, overall, like we should just discuss intent. You know, as far as like, um, you know, what are we hoping to accomplish with this? I mean, it seems like this is written as a way of like, we're assuming AI is going to be incorporated and used by students and staff alike.
Okay.
You know, and that's a big jump in itself, right there.
That is what we started on the first page. If we can go back up to the top. Okay. Was the statement of need and purpose. I'm not satisfied with either the green or the red, quite honestly. It's just a pointed departure.
This looks like the CADE policy in green. Is that the CADE policy in green?
No, this is, that's, uh, on Anne Marie's and Clint's, if I understand correctly.
And, and you are actually both correct, if I may. It is Anne Marie and Clint's work, which was highly influenced with the permission of CADE to use as guidance as a first cut.
Okay.
And when I spoke to Jody today, he told me that based on our meeting, he's going to revise it to, to flesh it out in the, in the strategy that, that I put out to you. So they are revising that now as a function of our, our work together.
He's going to be inviting you to join CADE anytime now on policy.
Well, he has spoken to me and Clint about possibly collaborating with them. Yes.
On an article. Yes.
Oh, fantastic.
Good.
Anyway, so you're, you're absolutely right, Ian. Uh, we need a statement of needs and purposes. And so if you'd like to take a look at that, and I'm open if, if you, if, if we individually want to take a crack at our different visions of what a statement of needs, and maybe we separate them, a statement of need and a statement of purpose. No, I don't care, whatever the group wants. Uh, maybe we want to each work and do our best and then bring them together and sit down around a table and have a live meeting and, and thrash it out.
So the other thing that came in our packet was the regulations on this. And it seems to have a lot of overlapping language with the policy that I'm seeing in front of me on the screen.
Um, the initial thing that we did with, with, um, in our meeting, the, the art, that paper, the, the first draft of what I did was called Elements of. And because it was AI that did it, AI threw in both policy issues and regulation issues. I've tried to take the regulation, regulation issues out of this.
And separated them.
That I've been, not been successful, uh, then identify what we've got in here that's regulations and we'll take them out. You are in charge of operations. I'm not trying in any way to.
No, I'm not suggesting that. It just, I do see some commonalities in these documents that I have in front of me with what you put together.
Well, there are some, there are. Well, there are some, there are some, and that's, that's what we need to work out.
No, you know, and to be fair though, I mean, with policy and regulation, they do dovetail, they do interlock. So to have some overlap or some echoes, you know, in the language, I don't think is necessarily harmful.
Yeah.
Just like what, when it comes to like, you know, how they're going to be implemented and how they're referred to, I think that's where it gets technical. But overall, I think it's fine to have some parallel structure there.
So maybe we have, we have about 45 minutes left to my drop dead time, unless you all leave earlier. Should we just take a look through this and just, I can listen to your comments on section by section and take notes and you can take notes. And then we'll take it up again for a portion of the next meeting. And we'll just work our way through it slowly. I want to do it right the first time.
Well, Matthew, I think the statement of need and purpose, I, I think that's fine, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I'm not satisfied with it. And what about you, Ian? What do you think about the three paragraphs, the two in green and the one in red?
Now, this is kind of like where my own inner curmudgeon starts to come out. I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of the AI altogether. So I'm, I'm kind of struggling with this and to, just on a foundational level. But I understand it is a thing that's everywhere now. So it's, it's something we have to manage. So I'm just trying to, you know, regulate my own internal biases.
I'll tell you, as soon as we get this one done, I'm going to bring up some, many others, still three to five years out. Clint's going to smile. We're going to have to deal with quantum computing, but not, not this year.
Well, what about it, Matthew? But about the, the green, is it, you have a problem with the two green sentences?
The two greens are the paragraphs that, that were based on CAE that were put together by Anne Marie and Clint.
Yeah.
And the one in red was one that I had done. They are redundant. They need to be tightened up. If you want Clint and Ian and anybody else to have a go at massaging them, I, I can do the same. I'm not trying to dodge the work. See if we can come up with a better statement of need and purpose. I'm all for it. Maybe that's an assignment we want to assign ourselves for the next meeting is everybody comes back with a statement of need and purpose. Or not.
Wouldn't Clint and Anne Marie write these two paragraphs?
They, they, Clint, you explain.
Sure. So again, Bev, we, we lifted heavily from relying on the CAE foundational policy, which those two, which those two green paragraphs are very similar to. Anne Marie and I sat down and made modifications that we deemed appropriate. And I also ran it by many of our instructional technology coaches that are often teachers from elementary through high school levels. So.
But what we know, what we know from our conversations with Jody is this was written, the green was, or the CAE piece was written in 2023. And in terms of a technologies evolution, that's like looking at a document from 1924. It, it needs to be updated. So how do you want to proceed? Do you want to take apart this one piece and look at it? Or do you just want to glance at the entire document? I want to guide the group, but I don't want to direct the group.
Well, maybe a 20,000 foot approach for this opening session, like where we maybe just read through it and kind of, you know, share the intent and like what the intended outcome would be with some of these policies. You know, like what are we trying to address in each section?
What do you think, Clint?
It works for me. Do you mind if I take a minute or two just to kind of share my guidance around that 20,000 foot view? Cause I think that is smart, Ian.
Oh, wow.
Great. So.
I'd love to hear what you have to say, Clint.
Great. I, I will try to be brief and I'd much prefer a dialogue than a, than a, than a lecture, but this is changing so quickly and, and I am not an expert and I question anyone who says they are an AI expert, or in this particular case, a generative AI, because we can start peeling back the terms as I did with the board last month and so forth. But this is changing extremely quickly. So that is a, that is challenge number one. Challenge number two is part of this overall document and a lot of what we're talking about and discussing is certainly policy. It's certainly regulations. It's certainly curriculum. It's certainly instruction. It's certainly professional development and so forth. So piecing those things out in Ian may or may not be a fool's errand and, and maybe be something that we don't want to take too much time doing right now. But again, I, these are things that I think we should be considering and discussing because that is very much changed the nature of those pieces. I guess where my mind goes next to is one of the critical pieces of this, and I'm happy that Matthew included it, is a regular review of this. Many of our policies, as this committee knows very well, have not been looked at five, 10, 15 years. And oftentimes there's absolutely no reason to, and that's great. Because of the nature with which this is changing and changing so quickly, I think it, it's critical that we do have a commitment to, or I would recommend a commitment to this being looked at and modified at a, at a semester, at a yearly, at a regular basis, just because of the rate with which things are changing. And, and I guess the final piece I would say before I, I would want to comment on some of these individual things. One of the biggest issues that we have right now is permission. It's, teachers are looking for permission on how they can and should be using many of these tools with students. And they're looking for that permission because they, they don't want to run afoul of any rules. So I think we need to at least have an agreed upon set of rules or norms or policies so that they can get that permission that they seek. And I also see students and parents doing the same thing. Many of the conversations that I've had with our students run the gamut of, yeah, I use it and it is what it is. And I don't admit to using it all the way through. I don't use it just because I do not want to be labeled with, you know, a cheating label or something similar to that. And then of course there's different versions of that throughout the, the spectrum of that. And, and I've had those same conversations with parents who are trying to help their, their child write college applications or, or, or apply for a job or a scholarship or something like that. There's a lot of unknown out there and helping people with permission and making this part of our regular practice. So they know the rules of the road would be the takeaway that I would want for a first cut for this. Knowing full well that this is going to continue to change and we're going to have to continue to look at this regularly over time. So I'll pause there for a second. Thank you for letting me at least make that statement.
So Matthew, would you, since you've been kind of deeply steeped in this, would you feel comfortable kind of just, you know, doing like a brief summary of each little section of like what, what it's attempting to accomplish?
Sure. If that's, if that's the way you go, if that's where you go, then I'm fine, fine with that.
Yeah.
This is, this may be new to you. What would you like to do?
I'd like to hear what you, what Matthew just said. And, you know, a, a, again, here we're looking at ethical behavior. And, you know, you know, we, we have to just accept the fact that there's this wonderful broad way of, a new way of learning and, and you know, like to put limitations on it, of course, you know, the bottom line is, hey, do your own thinking, use it to, to expand your thinking to the, the student. You know, and not to just copy down, you know, some, some ideas and, and get an A, you know? You really use it to, I mean, can you imagine the, the, the doors that this is going to open? Things that kids never even thought of before, just. You know, so I want to hear what you have to say because that's what I had to say.
Well, I'll be glad to share what I put together, but I'm not taking ownership of it. I had a little help. Okay. So the first thing I had going down to the next, well, we, we, I know we need to work on needs and purposes, but I think, is there agreement that that's something we need to do? Do we need to discuss that anymore? Or can we go on?
I would be happy to volunteer to take a shot at combining these three paragraphs, Matthew, to help upgrade them based on your feedback and keeping the intent of it. If, with your permission.
With my permission. And Jody is, Jody has volunteered his time. We're not paying him. I mean, he volunteered his time to help in this process because he sees Groton as a beacon for other schools.
And I would volunteer to rely heavily on Jody to be part of that collaborative effort.
I'd be damn full not to. Okay. So page two. Caitlin, thank you. Okay. Here's the mandated policy I wrote down every two years. If you ask me why I said two years instead of 18 months or 12 months or 30 months, I would just say, let me worry. I don't know. It's, it's a point of departure. That may be something we will leave in as two years for now. And then in six months, when we finish this or five months, when we finish this, we may have learned something new that requires it to be every 12 months or every 36 months.
Every 24 hours. I have a feeling this is going to take off way, way, way beyond two years.
Well, this is, but this is to review with our policy every year. My, my guess, my personal guess is to roll this out from the time we decide to roll it out with all of the professional development we're going to do across all the disciplines that we teach. I think it's only reasonable to think that it's going to be three or four years before everybody's on board. And everybody's comfortable with it. It can be tougher than wit and wisdom for sure. Anyway, any comments on the man, the need for a mandate cycle? Shall I go on?
Yeah. No, I'm in full agreement of that for all the reasons stated.
Okay. So there is no hierarchy. I mean, the, the, the way paper requires me to put things in an order and you think of an order, this is not, this is not an ordinal listing of things. Okay? This is not one, two, three. We can move these pieces around. Accuracy of information and viability of information. Well, holy potato pancakes, AI sweeps up statements of Senator Calhoun justifying slavery as God mandated, and that'll be in the database and, and that may come up when somebody does a search. And it will be accurate to the extent that it reflects what Senator Calhoun says. But God help the student who takes that as the gospel. So we really need to ensure not only that the information is accurate, but that the student understands the context in which the statement is accurate, but just because it's accurate, doesn't mean it's true. This is, this is critical thinking. This, we, this is going to be really help us teach critical thinking because if we don't, we're in trouble. Source validation. By that I mean, there are lots, lots of vendors. Some free, some not free. And we really need to monitor. And we may end up with us standing a technology committee in three or four years. God knows. But we need to monitor which, what we're going to allow into our system. The same way we monitor, we don't let pornography into our system. We have to monitor that evil players, and there will be some, don't get into our system. Critical evaluation skills. We're going to have our teachers, we're going to have to train our teachers how to use AI so they can teach the kids how to use AI. The feedback loop where we get all of our stakeholders to give us feedback on how they're doing while they're using this. The tool selection, I don't know what the vetting process is, but Clint's going to figure that out. If not tonight, soon.
It's in the works. It's in the works.
In the works. Bias mitigation. We're going to first of all have to define what we mean by bias.
This is something I don't want to take too much time, but if I may, Mr. Schulman, the, the bias mitigation in these different foundational models is a huge topic right now. Just because of the political associations in the domestic foundational models, as well as open source models coming from other countries around the world, some that may or may not be seen as friendly or not with our country, et cetera, et cetera. So there are, this is a very hot topic, especially when you start talking about other models being built on these foundational models and carrying those biases through that. Especially since some of these companies don't even know how and why their models are acting as if they are. I just leave that there. I'm sorry to just drop that and run, but that is a, this is a very big piece. And we could spend days, if not weeks or months unpacking this bias mitigation and I value it greatly. I just don't know if I could tell you exactly how or when we're going to be able to do that.
Yeah, I don't know. Let's just pick on bias mitigation. Because it's complex, we could end up with two pages on bias mitigation alone. And when you have a policy that ends up 18 or, you know, 16 or 18 pages, it becomes dysfunctional as a policy. So we first have to master what we're doing and then we have to contract it. There's a kabbalistic term for that that I'll spare you, you know? Okay. Any more questions about accuracy and reliability? Are there any aspects of either of those words that you think we should be considering beyond the few that I wrote here?
No, I think we're off to a good foundation here. Uh, one, it seems like we do have these big categories and, and, and there is going to be, as far as like bias mitigation and, and, and source validation. One of my concerns, you know, as a teacher would be, I guess, vetting of, of, of sources, you know? Typically in the past, you know, you've had, you have bibliographies, you have works cited pages and attributions within the text. But if someone's using AI as a research tool, how is that AI content that they're going to pull information from attributed to the sources, you know, to, to hearken back to Matthew's example of Calhoun? Was that Matthew that said Calhoun?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah. You know, even if like, how do, how do we know, how do we, how is a student or a teacher able to trace back to, to validate that the source? You know, who actually did the original work that is being pulled from and cited by the AI?
You've just helped us tremendously because I understood validation or I understand validation to be different from attribution. And the fact of the matter is we need both of them. So we may need to add attribution as another thing. Attribution would say, I used AI, its source was, I like perplexity because perplexity gives me the sources for each knowledge, knowledge or value claim it makes. It gives a source that I can look at. And we have to teach our students that they have to go beyond what it gives us to look at the sources so they can make judgments about, about whether the information is appropriate. But attribution certainly needs to be added to our list. What do you think, Clint?
I could live with that for now.
Okay. Okay. Any, any other comments? Cause, because that helped very much, Ian. Thank you.
That's all I got for now, but I'm glad to help.
Andrea, shall I go on to the next one?
Yes.
To enhance acquisition and to enhance knowledge acquisition and critical thinking, the district will. One, two, three, four, four things. We need foundational AI literacy education. What might that look like? It might look like in a classroom, I'll pick my areas of expertise, social studies or something, dividing our 20 kids into five groups of four and having them choose a topic of social studies and then have each of the four students in that group work independently to find out about that topic through AI. And then they compare their notes so they can see what a great range of distribution is. And then the teacher can go in and talk about attribution, validation, critical thinking. So we have it, we have an exercise at the very beginning of the, of the year. It's, it's just one example of a way of looking at literacy education.
And that's definitely in the lessing plan phase, which is even a step away from regulations. So that's really where the teacher, you know, needs to plan those lessons. And certainly we can provide professional learning around that. And that's also operational.
And, and that, and that, that ranges when making sure that, that each discipline figures out how it's going to align.
Right.
Its curriculum, curricula goals and intended learning outcomes. And it may be a different platform for mathematics than it would be for social studies.
Exactly.
If, if I may make a suggestion, I, I almost would change this large chunk with its four bullets to be more of focused on the first bullet, which then discusses exactly that. You know, with some type of language that talks about the unique differences around curriculum instruction and assessment within the, the domains that we're talking about. within the, the domains that we're talking about, you know, science, math, social studies, et cetera, et cetera. When we start getting into personalized learning and I, I, I struggle with differential learning styles, because I don't, I think there's not real empirical evidence that says that there are learning styles for people. We could put a pin in that and talk about that some other day. But some of these other pieces, I think, are, to Susan's point, a bit far afield and are moving into is, you know, curriculum instruction, assessment, teaching and learning.
I'm sorry, let me just ask Clint one question, then it's gonna be Ian Stern. How would you frame that in terms of a, of a subtitle? Students, this, this foundational thing, as I can see.
Yeah, so I, I, I would turn this entire section into the first bullet. That's what I would do, and I would leave the remaining three bullets, you know, and maybe expand again and make it general across all of our domains. But then leave the rest of these three to, you know, curriculum instruction that we're doing, not as a policy or regulation. But that's just my first take on this, so.
If we move ahead in that direction, I wanted to work offline with you on that because.
Sure, happy to.
But I'm not sure how to.
If, if this committee is comfortable with that, of course, yeah.
Ian, I, I don't want to keep you. Come on.
I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of build on that. I think there is, I, I agree that oh, there's a lot here that kind of overlaps into regulation as far as the technicality goes. But again, I think we can kind of split the middle and maybe just have some language in the policy that kind of indicates these are areas of concern and interest that we look to the regulations to to guide more specifically. And then to that end, uh, hearing Clint and Susan talk about, you know, and I'm a firm believer in this as well, that uh, you know, the teachers should lead the way on the technicalities, like on the ground, like, you know, getting educated on what's what, what, how the tool can be used, how to validate the tool, how to, you know, source attributions, but also how it applies to their particular subject matter. So maybe there might be an opportunity for like creating a digital literacy committee of teachers that would also have like a little subcommittees inside that for each like major subject category. So then whatever commonalities of of AI that, you know, transcend subject matter, they could all kind of, you know, have consensus and work together on, but then when they need to break off and deal with the particulars, you know, they're, they're all kind of in the same room and in the same conversation.
I, I, I think there's, if I may comment, I think there's real value in that, Ian. Um, there's a struggle in the community around whether we should be teaching AI literacy or whether we should be using AI, building AI skills in, in service of literacy within English and science and math and social studies and and the like. So i- it's, it's somewhat of a word play or a word game, but it does, words matter and it reinforces what our ultimate goal is, you know, are we trying to create a group that's, you know, literate in AI or using these tools and these, you know, playing it like an instrument in service of our learning goals?
Well, I kind of see it as a both and situation, honestly.
I can't argue with that, yeah.
Yeah, because I think both are necessary and are will be needed. Um, moving into this brave new world, we are inexorably entwined already.
Genie is out of the bottle, whether we like it or not, I agree.
Yeah, and I'm speaking as a child in the eighties and nineties who grew up on the Terminator and T2, so I got my biases, talk about biases.
You and I are there together.
Yeah.
So if you think about curriculum development, at least in the classes I took on curriculum development, it said you start out with what your intended learning outcomes are. And you build backwards to say how you construct something to go from where you are to where you want to be. And that's, that was the frame of reference that I had in putting in these various categories. Remember, there's no order to this at this point, and some of what we're just talking about, we will be coming back to in about two minutes when we get to professional education development strategies.
Kate, I think that was your prompt. Thank you.
Okay, so developmentally based acceptable and unacceptable use of AI. In the draft that I had sent out to you under the title of elements of, this one paragraph was followed by the division into lower primary, upper primary, middle and high, and it went into what were acceptable and unacceptable uses were. And you can see that's all been deleted because that will go to regulations. We're now just talking about the need for developmentally based acceptable and unacceptable use of AI. If you happen to agree that we need to do that. Feedback?
Yeah, if I had to jump in, I'd say, um, yeah, I think we, we do need to address every aspect that, that, that develops with these things. So I mean, I think it's a good approach, but as, as we move forward, if we find stuff that's too granular, I think we just kind of, you know, cut that out, put it in a spare document and hand it off to the regulation group.
The, the big topic around this is the conversation really is about cognitive offload. Um, and the example of a calculator comes, comes up often in these conversations around what we should be explicitly teaching and skills and what can be offloaded and what's appropriate to offload. Um, and I'm not pretending to, even a little bit, to be the expert in what we can and cannot offload or what we should be offloading, but that is really where the larger conversation is happening now. And I would assume that would be part of the work that a group doing regulations would be discussing, but certainly teaching and learning conversations that Anne Marie's leading ongoing would include exactly that across all domains, or at least that's what I would assume.
Susan?
Yeah, I, I really feel like, um, that we should take a closer look at this and make sure that we have policy and policy, regulations and regulations, and then the teaching tools separated out.
The, the challenge is that there, as I've said about a lot of things, there, there are things that are discreetly policy and discreetly operations, and there are things that are both, both. And that's a gray area that we're just gonna, it's a dynamic tension that we're gonna wrestle with and try to come up with what works for Groton. And, uh.
And, and I think this section, sorry to continue to jump in here, but I think this section really grasps that, because it's not telling us what is acceptable, what's unacceptable and so forth. I think Ian said that. I think Susan's alluding to that, you know? This is appropriate and important for policy to dictate that these conversations and these decisions are being made, but not for policy to dictate it. So I, I, I like this section doing that. And, and much too, I would probably do the same thing with professional development in the next section where, because we know this is changing, this is a large shift and it touches across all that we do. And it's new and it's happening quickly. I think professional learning opportunities are, are, are even more critical than ever in this particular area.
And this is gonna be a big challenge, Susan, because I don't know that we have the human capacity. We don't think we have the intellectual infrastructure yet of, of people out there who can come in and talk about AI. I'm sure there are some, but it's not like getting somebody to come in and talk about math curriculum. We have lots of people who are trained in that. It's a new domain.
Yeah, and again.
I think there's a lot of people who are really getting very involved now. I mean, even Dr. Kennedy has taught us a few good lessons and the staff. So I think there will be even more people out there that can help us navigate this.
But we're gonna need somebody who is skilled not in, in AI and in math to help our math faculty use AI. And it may not be the same person as the person who is skilled in AI and has a strong, uh, in the sciences or strong in language arts.
So I don't know, I mean, that's really something that we can, um, work with our organizations to figure out. We're all connected very deeply. You know, with different organizations that will help us facilitate that. But I don't think that's something that needs to cross over in policy. That's an operational thing.
Would, would you be gracious enough, Susan, to get in touch with CAPS and see if they can beyond Weston and this Connecticut, uh, technology thing, if they're, they're aware of any other school districts in Connecticut that are, that are either have or are working on this so we can not reinvent the wheel?
Sure. Yep.
Great.
I can even do my CCLM leaders of mathematics, the group that I'm very connected to as well.
So Ian, if I, tell me if I'm wrong, but I, I think you might be the person who would be most apt to have a crack at looking at what I did under the professional education development strategies and reworking it. Not, I mean, to have your own crack at it and, and see what your experience can bring to the table.
Um, well, uh, yeah, I wouldn't mind doing that. At, at the I mean, where I teach, we don't have these tools. Um, but I am aware of them and I, and I kind of looking at it from a teacher point of view, I can anticipate. Like, I think I could kind of anticipate, you know, what some issues might be in the classroom, but, you know, I would, I would actually, I think this might be an opportunity for, you know, the board and the staff to kind of have like some cooperative efforts. You know, uh, are you asking me to go through this now live or? And, and kind of like send back with notes. Okay, yeah, yeah, I'll be glad to like kind of go through this and take notes on it, but I would also like really just, I would love to get some feedback from the on the ground teachers in the district who actually would have to face the imminent reality of handling this stuff or even have had to handle it already.
Suggestion, we could put together a work group, Clint.
So.
Navigate this. I do believe we need to bring the teachers involved in this too.
Yep, and Anne Marie, just to jump right in here, Anne Marie and I have been discussing this, and we have preliminary plans on mapping out how we are going to leverage professional development days, TLI days, uh, administrative council days and others to be as inclusive as possible and really hitting this hard as a priority next year for professional development activities. Um, I have been leading informal teams to date for about the last year, year and a half uh, around this, and we have some wonderful staff that have kind of taken the reins and and have jumped in and are looking for others to connect to as they educate themselves and use these. We have others that have not touched any of this for reasons that I mentioned before about permission and many in between. The variance that I'm seeing anecdotally across just the professionals in Groton, which I think is a fair representation of the larger teaching community, um, i- is very wide. And, and we need to have some guaranteed assured experiences, but also give people permission to dive deeper into how this is impacting their particular domain, and then bring that back, as you mentioned before, Matthew, in more of a looped fashion. So people are engaged, people are having conversations. I've tried to be that central repository to link them um, and continue to do that through Anne Marie, and that is the plan for next year as well. And weaving the Board of Education as part of those conversations next year, I think makes perfect sense.
So let me ask, uh, what I'm hearing us say, I, I'm processing what I'm hearing and I'm wondering what you think of the following. Ian would, or somebody else, someone amongst us would massage this professional development piece. We'd look at it together, and then we would ask Susan whether it's the curriculum, not, not in our curriculum committee, the curriculum, would you have a group of faculty that looks at curriculum? Whether it's with them or maybe ask these, these principals to choose two faculty members from each of their schools. That's too many. That would be fourteen people. That's not a small working group. One person from each of the schools who would be willing to review our draft policy statement regarding professional development and see what they think of it. And then, so we're just working on it, we just want to get some feedback. It doesn't mean you can't set up your working group, but, uh, we, I'm looking for help for us for the policy as opposed to the implementation.
Um, Matthew, if I, if I could jump in real quick on that.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I would be glad to kind of do what I could do on my own, but, um, you know, if there is gonna be a group of teachers looking at this and kind of putting, bringing their input in, I mean, I, I would be totally fine and on board with like sitting in with them and maybe interacting directly, because we could do a lot more in a lot shorter time as far as like trying to get some, some collaborative ideas out there. I'd love to hear kind of just like their comments, you know, organically.
We need to give them something that they can react to. That was the purpose of this tonight, to give you something to react to so we could move forward. I think going to the teachers just to have a brainstorming session when they haven't thought about it and have no frame of reference, we use up a lot of time and probably go in a lot of directions.
Well, I think what you have here is a lot to think about that they can go through. Yeah.
I agree.
That's, that's fine with me. I did my best, but I know my limitations.
I have a couple more comments. I'm trying to be careful of your stated eight o'clock goal to Matthew, so I'm trying to be considered as far as what I bring up and so forth. As far as the next section, the administrative efficiencies through AI goes, I think it's a critical piece to include in a policy, so I'm super happy that you put it in there. I know you have some examples specifically in here, but I would, I would have this as a main component of the, of the policy uh, where that's a regular, uh, you know, evaluation review process to look at those efficiencies, matching the tools with what can be accomplished. And then maybe these examples or a to-do list, if you will, almost of options gets prioritized outside of the policy. In some frame of reference, because yes, this is, we're, we're now moving into kind of an agentic AI world, and that's a whole no can of worms that we can get into at some point. Um, which will be very important, but it's, it's, it goes from generative AI, which is kind of a chat-based world to actual agents working for you, and that is really what this next efficiency round of, of LLM-powered features are gonna be about. That's a big deal, and that is really beyond the scope of tonight and this policy.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've, we've talked tonight for just an introduction to the PD. Uh, any more comments on the administration efficiencies? Are there any other bullets that we ought to at least be articulating? Because we only have one, we only have one more after this. The page three has one, two, three, four bullets, and there are three more bullets on administrative efficiencies, so seven bullets.
Uh, again, just a quick skim. I'm, I'm thinking like this is a good foundation, a good start point to look at ways that could be implemented in administration and areas of concern we may want to consider. You know, as far as policy guidance goes, but then in the process of developing that, I also see a natural organic process of, of, of pulling stuff out that's too granular and setting aside and handing it off to regulation team.
One of the intended outcomes or hoped, not intended, hopeful outcomes for me, Susan, is that if you look at the administration efficiencies, that whoever, uh, I don't know who's doing tracking attendance, but you could speak to that individual and say, you know, we're looking at AI. Have you ever thought that AI could be helpful for you in tracking attendance or scheduling optimization, you know, for, for classroom scheduling? Or, uh, certainly Lauren would be somebody who would be wanting to look at that as far as analytics. Uh, Rebecca would might want to look at something in communication. So if these, if these categories are useful, this gives you the power, Susan, if, if we, if we buy into that, that's an if.
Right.
If we.
Now, I think it does.
Have the power to go to your subordinates and say, this is the direction we're really thinking of going. We have not made any decisions. Give us your input now so we don't screw up.
No, you're right. I would like their, um, you know, feedback on that.
Yeah. That's why it's gonna take us three, four months on this, guys. It's not gonna happen overnight. Okay, the last thing on our agenda, the last one, or seven fifty-three, is supplemental policy elements. Ethical use and data privacy, equity and accessibility, stakeholder engagement, and ethical oversight committee. You call it a working group, call it a committee. It does not have to be a board committee. It could be something that we say there's a need for an ethical oversight committee, and in your regulations, you may choose or not to say we will have a working group of three people, one from each of the three levels who will be available to look at any questions of ethics as they show up. The last one be transparency requirements, and I'll shut up and ask Ian to pop in.
Um, thank you. Uh, yeah, no, definitely. Again, uh, similar to the administrative stuff you did, Matthew. You know, this, this looks like a great foundational document and thing to build off of and, and, and parse out to regulation as needed. Uh, I'm, I'm glad you put in the ethical oversight committee idea. And, um, I would just suggest, yeah, that we, and you kind of hinted at it, having like sort of integrated group uh, with administration, teachers, and maybe some board representation there as well that could, you know, be working in concert to deal with on the ground, you know, emergent situations.
We will have to go up to a 23 member board though, to cover all the
So I, I, I do not disagree with anything that's been said on this section. My only suggestion on this, maybe I would take out stakeholder engagement and maybe transparency requirements and make those a Groton unique committees or boards, what have you. But with the lift that these are going to require and the fact that I think they're very important, I'd almost love to see us working with CAE to almost start with a state body for some of these because I think in ethical use and data privacy, working group committee and so forth at the state of Connecticut level, that is representative of and includes members of teachers and parents and others from our community could be a good way to start with this. One, because I think there's not a huge amount of expertise in this to get started. But two, just the amount of work and thoughtfulness and so forth that's going to need to go in this. So if we have the ear of CAE, which I think we do, and we want to make a recommendation like that, and that could be in action items that come out of some of that work. I value these things. I just don't know if an individual school district has the capacity to take all of this important work on tomorrow.
Okay, so one, give me a second, Ian. CAE is, Jody is also chair of a state education committee on, on electronic technology. So he has, he has the ear of SED as well, which is helpful. Before I turn the last word over to Ian, I would like to invite everybody who's online tonight to look this over and write down whatever notes you have. Try to take some notes and send them to me and I will compile them so that I will try to compile them faithfully and share them with you all as we move ahead. Ian, you're up.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, no, I just want to thank Clint for his comments there. And I'm glad to know that there's been some movement and interest on a state level that that may be a more efficient approach. And, you know, as far as like a lot of these things are going to be universal concerns across all the districts of the state. So yeah, I would be in support of, of moving in that direction as well.
Would you guys have any difficulty with Clint and I having another meeting with Jody? I went ahead on my own, but I would like, I would like your endorsement of this process.
By all means. Yes, absolutely. And I'll check with CAPS to see if I can get anything from them as well.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, obviously I'll let you know what we're doing. And Clint, I would like to chat with you tomorrow to see if we can set up a appointment with you and I had a few questions that I'm
Happy to do it, and I, this is a huge growth area in our collective work together and could even be a CAE presentation at the Mystic Marriott or something like that, so.
It's your good.
There's a lot of options.
They're collecting those, you know.
Well, the, Jody already put in a, I can't think of the name of the woman who's organizing it, but he said he's already sent in a presentation by the three of us at, at CAE as a possibility. And if, if that happens, I would be, I may, may not be on the board at that point, but I would really like it if we do that at CAE to have Ian and Andrea be there with us. Susan, if she wants, okay, sure.
If we get selected, I volunteer to pay for my own housing that night. So yes, no problem.
I think you have one very nearby.
It is nice having it that, this close.
Is there anything else we need to do tonight to, to close out?
Job well done. You guys have really thought through. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you.
Great, good leadership, Matthew. Thank you.
One last thing is we're scheduled to meet on Monday, on Tuesday, June 10th. And I believe that Joyce called me up. I believe she said it was the eighth grade promotion that night.
It, that is true.
So I would, I would like to make another date in, in June. If you, Andrea and Ian would email me with your non availabilities, give me the freedom to choose, but tell me when you're not available for a Tuesday.
I, I'll do that.
Don't do it now.
Yeah.
Or just send me an email.
Sure.
Is there anything else before we adjourn? Beverly, anything else? You've been kind of silent.
No, I got it. I've been listening in. What about Andrea?
I'm going to come to Andrea. I want to give Beverly one more shot. Well, she's probably fixing dinner. Okay, Andrea, we're up for you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Right at eight o'clock on the dot.
APM. Hallelujah.